All right, good evening. Welcome to the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education meeting for Monday, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mrs. Stepp.
Here.
Mr. Benson.
Here.
Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Four members present?
All right, what we'd like to do first, do we have citizens of the month?
Do you?
All right. We want to bring them up first and recognize them?
My name is Aria. I am in second grade. I want to be a doctor.
She's got confidence.
We don't.
And what grade are you in?
Third.
What do you want to be when you grow up?
A paleontologist.
What's your name, Blake?
Baker.
What grade are you in?
I'm in the third grade.
And what do you want to be when you grow up?
A police officer.
Awesome. What grade are you in?
Camden.
What grade are you in?
I'm in the eighth grade.
What's your name, John?
Matthew.
Matthew, what grade are you in?
Fourth.
And what do you want to be when you grow up?
Classroom.
Awesome. All right. What's your name?
Clara.
Clara, what grade are you in?
Second.
What would you like to be when you grow up?
A teacher.
Teacher.
I'm a student.
What would you like to be when you grow up?
Second.
Second. What do you want to be when you grow up?
A singer.
Singer, that's awesome. So what's your name?
My name is Carly.
Carly, what grade are you in?
First grade.
What would you like to be when you grow up?
A doctor.
What's your name?
Ben.
And what grade are you in?
Second.
Second grade, what would you like to be when you grow up?
Ex-oral.
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 Awesome. All right, if everyone could rise to the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll turn and face the flag, guys.
Round here, hon, this way.
You guys start us off, ready? Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the rule of liberty and justice for all.
Great job.
Great job.
Thank you and congratulations to everybody who was recognized. Item four is our legislative report.
I still have nothing this, I'm hoping next month I'm back in action with really exciting stuff, but still nothing this month.
We'll be waiting. Item five, student liaison report.
We got Mrs. Shoup's life skills class here to talk about the cupcake war challenge.
Hello, thanks for having us today. I'm Heather Shoup, I teach life skills in grades four through seven over at St. Louis. And in sixth grade, we have a competition called the Cupcake Wars, and each sixth grade class competes and is judged by the teachers in the building, and I'm going to have them present the rest, and then we have a couple of displays up here for you all to look at.
My name is Sophia Rogers, and requirements for cupcake wars include creative paint, district, and air traffic, and awesomeness later, and courts, yummy cupcakes.
My name is Sophia Rogers, but we're playing our cupcakes in the night dreams. Our paragraph was spider spot around eleven chief line, and no one knows about it because of her. People don't see the spiders because they're very sneaky and camouflaged in the dark. The cupcakes are like just like the trees, and we even captured a spider and then examined it. The spiders were really, really hard to catch. We think we got all of them, now we don't know what to do with it. Want to help us out?
My name is Violet Teeger, our group baked a lemon cupcake with three seeds of bees, Oreos for spiders, and edible moving out. We then added the latex to tie them with our scissors.
My name is Amber Dickinson, my group's name is creepy calling cupcakes, and here is our display that we showed the judges.
My name is Lizzie, our paragraph for creepy calling cupcakes. Creepy calling cupcakes are spooky but delicious, not boring, with vanilla orange frosting on top of delicious yellow flavored chocolate chips. Spooky spiders made out of Oreos, with chocolate covered pretzels, and candy ice. This time, since all of it is just around the corner, we need five, we will make this spooky snack that we need to read.
My name is Breaker, so the judges for the cupcake wars were the substitute team of teachers, the special teachers, and our school counselors.
My name is Breaking, and we're grateful for our cupcake wars, we practiced baking cupcakes using the two different ones to see if they were, my different ways to false cupcakes have of course been tested products.
My name is Lily Malier, cupcake wars was a very fun experience. I really enjoyed working with my team, because I learned this way and we made more cupcakes. Now we would like to give you these of our cupcakes, we will be doing.
So the girls, the girls in Africa are going to bring around a cupcake for each of you to try.
Thank you.
Awesome. Haven't had dinner yet. Task board meeting up.
Never turned down a cupcake.
Nope.
Right. Thank you. Oh my gosh, that was awesome.
Wow.
Have we been passing them down, or are they closed?
I don't know.
Take them to the left. It's all you, man.
Look at more shirt. Thank you so much. Those are awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wow. All right, these low fat.
Thank you.
These are low fat. Nobody said they were low.
That frosting is really good.
Are we allowed to get started?
Maybe one bite, huh?
Now we're all on camera taking big pictures. Just smash it in.
The rest of the media's got stuff on their hands. Oh, thank you, perfect.
Oh, nevermind.
That'd be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there lemon? No, I'm going to get all of my leaves.
No, that's liquor. I mean, Alex, yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I like your gift, it's a red stuff, Mark.
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
You're delicious.
Great job on the cupcakes, great job on the presentation. Thank you everybody for getting up and speaking.
That lemon is really good.
So we'll move on to item six, student board member report. Mr. Freeman.
So for today, I have Payan, and she's going to talk about peer leadership and its connection with Big Buddies.
Awesome.
Yes, that's good.
All right, so my name is Bayan Logs, and I'm a senior at the high school, and I've been lucky enough to take peer leadership for the past few years, as a junior and senior, and luckily I've gotten in over the years. And it's a classroom where we organize different events and get more people included, people that are often left out, or people that don't join clubs or sports, we often put them in games and different, or activities. So first, we are doing something that we're hosting a new member, it's powder buff, and it's like a fight of cancer tonight, and we're going to be doing gravel baskets, we're like putting gravel baskets together ourselves, we're like going up to different shops and running in, and putting together baskets. We're doing chemo care kits right now, where we are getting different things that people that are going through chemo need, and we're going to send them off to people that are going through chemo. We also have done tie blankets last year, where we make blankets out of the fabric we buy, and we give them to kids that are less fortunate. And then we also are going to be doing something with Kingston coming up, where we're going to go to Kingston and hopefully do a prom with them, like a senior prom, and we're also going to be doing bingo. We're also doing lunch lady and custodian appreciation, where we're going to get all the custodians' gifts and the lunch ladies. And then most important thing, my favorite thing, is Big Buddies, which is inclusive with the elementary school and the middle school. Every single person in the class either gets one or two buddies from each school, and it's such a good program. I can't explain enough how much it makes our day and how much it makes their day doing these things. These are kids that don't get to be involved, like I said before, and these people are more quiet and can't open up to certain people, and are quiet and they're shell, and they get put with us, and they often open up to us and talk to us about things, and we're like their older siblings, and so it's really nice. It's not only good for them, but it is good for us, like we gain a relationship with these kids, and they can look up to us, and we have, we can go there, we do all much activities with them, we do bingo, we're on the first, we give them gifts, at the end of the year we give them gifts, and we also have lunch with them. So, thank you.
Thanks, Bayon. Thank you.
All right, item seven is public participation for agenda items. This time is allotted for community members to speak about to the board regarding items on the agenda. Please register your name, address, topic, and group affiliation. Time allotted is thirty minutes total, individuals should keep their time to three minutes or less. The board president reserves the right to limit a speaker's time. Do we have, there's a list back in the, we'll check the list, but did anyone sign up to speak about agenda items? Okay, I didn't, I didn't see anyone, I walked by. All right, so the next, next item is a presentation, Andy Stillman, Director of Athletics.
Thank you so much for having me. I want to present or share a proclamation with the Ohio Senate for Abby Gauri. Abby couldn't be here right now, she's at soccer practice preparing for the sectional final game coming up this week, but I just wanted to read a little bit of the proclamation that the senators sent us, Senator Matt Huffman and Senator Nathan Manning. It says, "A diligent and capable individual, you are indeed deserving of recognition for your outstanding accomplishments as a member of the Vermillion High School softball team. You're a remarkable young athlete, you received all-around county division two first-team honors this season, and your exceptional record for personal success stands as a hallmark worthy of emulation." So just wanted to recognize Abby on this award. As a side note, Abby's a junior now, she broke the school record last year for career home runs, just in two seasons essentially, and the single-season home run record, so she's a, she's a power hitter, and gonna, I mean, I'm sure extend that record even more next to spring, so just wanted to congratulate Abby on that, if you could.
Awesome, thank you. All right, we also have a presentation from Clara Vilagi, the FFA teacher.
All right, so I'm Clara Vilagi, the FFA instructor at the high school, and I have with me our newly elected FFA president, Owen Steiner. He would like to share a little bit about the National FFA Convention that we plan to attend next week, so.
Ninety-seven National FFA Convention is October twenty-second, twenty-second to October twenty-sixth. Who will be attending is six newly elected FFA officers, and will be traveling with Delk High School, Black River High School, and New London High School. Sorry, correction, Londonville High School. A national convention is a convention and expo based on building leaders and influencers ready to help the world make a good impact. General session, students, students will see the national officers on professional business meetings and share the same experience with over one million students from all fifty states. The career expo is thousands of colleges and companies across the US will have booths available for students and opportunities in their future career in agriculture. In that, we have several agricultural forums will be going on during this trip, all of the range from fish hatchery all the way to glass gloves. And then we have five sponsors helping us to build this program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clara, I missed it, how many students are going?
We're getting six.
Six, thank you, thank you.
Awesome, congratulations.
Thank you.
Item eight is our superintendent's report and/or recommendations.
Yes, under item eight, excuse me, I recommend that the board approve the one-year, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five additional duties contract for the following certified staff, Kurt Habermill, VHS head boys basketball coach, level forty-three, step six.
I'll move. I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Abstain.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved, three zero, one abstention.
And we have a few presentations tonight, I'm going to change the order though, I'm going to bring Rod Waifert up from Fanning Howie first, because he has a longer drive than the principals do to get home, so he gets to go first. We've been working with Rod for probably over a year now, I think. We've asked Rod and his team at Fanning Howie to develop a plan for modernizing and renovating our buildings, all of our facilities. He's done that, and tonight he's going to share with us what that looks like.
Yeah, so thank you, everyone, for having us this evening. I need to mention that we've got Jeff Palmer, a Fanning Howie employee as well, former superintendent, helps us understand the school processes a little bit better sometimes, so. As Mr. Howell indicated, we've walked through all of your buildings and really did assessments of them, very similar to what the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission would do if they were co-funding you for projects. Their assessment process is very thorough, that's why we use the same process, we helped them develop that, it's actually many years ago. So it kind of touches all aspects of your building and gives you a real good idea of everything that you really, you know, might want to consider. We've done that with all your buildings, and we've kind of worked with Mr. Howell and his staff to kind of narrow down the things that we really think are priorities, and that's what we want to, we want to show you tonight. So, starting with the high school, we looked at, in the assessment, there are twenty-eight different categories that we look at, everything from HVAC systems to electrical, to accessibility, to furniture, and kind of everything in between, so that's what, that's what kind of compiles our list. What we kind of landed on were, at the high school, were some HVAC units, there's six rooftop units here in this building that are probably due for replacement, the associated electrical work that will go with those, obviously, to make them operate. Roofing needs to be replaced, auditorium sound system needs addressed, there's some, a little bit of tuck pointing and masonry cleaning around the outside of the building that could stand to be taken care of. Replacement and finishes and casework throughout the building, display boards, hallway lockers, toilet partitions, interior doors and hardware, to kind of get everything on the same kind of system, and stage curtains, so it's kind of a finishes line item. Abatement of any remaining hazardous materials, there's still a little bit left in the buildings, not very much, I'm going to try and get rid of all those. Interior lighting, including egress light, emergency egress lighting systems, handicap access, there's a few accessibility issues in the building, not a lot, but a few that we found. Signage throughout the building, new wearing course on the asphalt pavement outside, there's some water main work that needs to be done, and new generator, loose furnishings, and technology infrastructure upgrades. So those are kind of our systems improvements that we saw as we walked through and kind of evaluated everything. And then we moved into what areas of the building could stand to be renovated more extensively, in other words, for programs instead of just systems. So looking at it from the educational standpoint, what do we need to do? So we looked at various areas of the building, I guess it's easy, easy to start with our left area, starting with locker room, or not locker room, science labs, could be, are ready to be, you know, kind of reprogrammed a little bit. Media center, large group restrooms on both ends, the auditorium, lab space back here to kind of prep it for some, some new vocational programming, and then any large group restrooms around the building, we kind of looked at and included as well. And then the, the, the meeting space back here, that we, that we met in actually a couple times, along with some new identity at the new two main entrances, so those are kind of the reprogramming spaces that we talked about here. Any questions on high school? Okay. Moving on to the middle school, we did the same kind of assessment, several of these things are similar to the high school, all the buildings are, the high school and middle school are kind of all, you know, in a very similar condition. There's, there's some underground electric issues from the service pole that we want to get addressed. Curtain wall replacement at the cafeteria library, there's some pretty good leaks in those systems that we want to address. Again, minor tuck pointing on the exterior masonry, finishes and casework, again, all of those things that we talked about, the high school, abatement of hazardous materials, interior lighting and emergency egress, handicap access, signage, elevator replacement over there because of, of course, it's a couple of floors. Concrete walks need to be addressed, there's some water main work, rework there that also needs to be addressed, new generator, loose furnishings and technology infrastructure, again, so very similar kind of work, which is not, not a big surprise. And then the interior re, kind of reprogramming or renovations that we talked about mainly includes the large group restrooms, which there are four, two on each floor, and then, it's kind of hard to see from where you guys are at, but on your classrooms over there at the middle school, where you don't have any classroom doors, you included means to address those as well. So there's, I think, sixteen of those instances, if I remember. Moving on to the elementary, of course, that's the newest building, and really doesn't need a whole lot, but temperature controls probably are ready to be looked at anyway, at least by the time that we would, we'd actually be doing work on the building. Curtain wall, we know there's some leak issues over there, so we're including efforts to address that. Wearing course on the pavement, the concrete walks and curves, some additional drainage at the playground and soft surface material as well, and then, again, by the time we get to that project, after you pass the bond issue and get through design and everything, loose furnishings are probably close to being, needing to be looked at at that point, so. Some other facilities in the district that we, that we've talked about and looked at are replacing the tennis courts, six tennis courts, those are, those are in shape needing to be addressed, and then outfitting the large storage area in the field house to reprogram that space for wrestling, locker rooms, and those kinds of spaces, related spaces. We've also included transportation facility, this would be taking offline the facility you have now, and replacing that with a new facility in the same, very similar location, same piece of property. What we've got included is about a forty-five hundred square foot pre-engineered metal building facility, which would have two work bays, a wash bay, drivers' rooms, restrooms and office, you know, all those ancillary spaces as well, as well as space, outside space for twenty-two buses and plug-ins, all the pavement that would need to go along with that, fencing gates, those kinds of things. Any questions on any of that?
Right, go back to the athletic facility, we also talked about renovating part of the field house to include an additional wrestling area, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I missed that.
And that's about forty-six hundred square feet.
Yeah.
So when we apply all the current costs to those renovations, again, the OFCC updates these costs every year, and it's a really, they do a really good job of doing that, and they take into consideration the costs that they've experienced in the past year, as well as working with all their construction managers to project costs into the future, so that's what we use here. And then those renovations, that all those renovations, I talked about, the systems renovations and the, and the reprogramming renovations, all total about thirty, almost thirty-five million dollars for all four buildings and the tennis courts. To that, we've added a ten percent design contingency, that covers things that maybe we don't know that are still going to need to be done, maybe we haven't talked about all the things that were, I haven't really thought about all those things. There's always, there's always issues that come up as you're approaching design to say, oh, you know, we didn't think about that, so we'll make sure we have a contingency to cover those things. That brings that down to about thirty-eight million. Construction contingency is added to that then, of about seven percent, that's a standard percentage for renovation projects. Construction contingency is dollars set aside to address things that come up during construction. An example, you may have poor soil someplace, if you're doing some site work like parking lots and those kinds of things, you don't know that until you get into construction, unfortunately. If you're moving a wall, there may be a major electrical service going through that wall that wasn't on any drawings anywhere, so nobody would know that, and those things cost money to take care of, so that's what that kind of line item is set aside. So that brings that down to about forty-one million, and then to that, we've added a market contingency. We've been doing this since about COVID, because the market has just been so fluctuating. Prior to COVID, we can pretty well depend on our numbers, but since COVID, things that, you know, supply chain has been crazy, costs have been crazy, and then now with these, you know, two recent hurricanes, when something like that happens, it has an effect, you know, several months down the road, so we're just not sure what those effects are going to be yet. So that market contingency is there as a, what happens if the market goes crazy on That line item is ten percent, that can be any percent, you want it to make it, you know, if you want to make it eight, or five, or twelve, or whatever you want to, whatever you're comfortable with, it's essentially an insurance policy. But it's just something that, you know, we're recognizing that the market is not as linear and as consistent as it has been in the past, we won't be able to count for that. So all, all told, that brings us down to about forty-five million, then you add soft costs onto that, soft costs are things like plan approvals, bond council fees, architect fees, printing costs, all those kinds of things that are actually construction, and that bottom line brings that down to just under fifty million dollars, so that's kind of everything that we talked about, and I think it's everything that we, we've talked about in our meetings today.
Yep.
So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Not at the moment. Would we be able to get like copies of the presentation?
Yes, I have it, he's on my computer right there, yeah, he just gave it to me when he got here tonight, so.
And any of the backup that, you know.
Yep. All right, thank you, Rod.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, before we have the principals do their presentation, we're doing a quick fourth-class presentation, I want to talk a minute about.
We don't have any amplifiers then, it's used to the, all right, I'm cut up.
And I want to be, I want just to give context to what the principals are going to present. So you've seen this graphic, right, it's on the walls, it's in different places, I've presented it to you at times, but it's always good to kind of go back and just kind of remind us that, you know, what these elements mean and why they're so important for driving our decision-making, okay? So if we break this down, right in the middle is student achievement, that's why we're here, that's why schools exist, that's the work that we should be focused on doing, okay? So that's why that's in the middle, that's why it looks like bullseye. Now, the most important thing for getting student achievement is having really good instruction, in other words, teachers in the classroom doing a great job helping our kids learn, all right? all right? So in order to get that, there's three components that make that happen. One is the rigorous relevant curriculum. Has to be in place. Everyone has to know what it is. It has to be aligned vertically and horizontally. And we have to make sure that we're teaching it. And it's a, it's a never-ending process to continue to make sure that the curriculum is aligned and that we're teaching the standards from the curriculum, okay? That never ends, we're constantly working on that. Then there's teacher knowledge and skill, and that goes back to the teachers knowing, understanding the curriculum and having the knowledge and skill to teach it, okay? And then the teachers have to engage the students with the curriculum. Those are the three most important things in creating instructional effectiveness and student achievement, all right? So that's why we do building instructional core plans. So what we're going to hear tonight from our principals is what they're going to do around these three elements, curriculum, teacher knowledge and skill, and student engagement, so that we're continuously improving instruction and getting better student achievement, all right? So that's the point of this, building instructional core plans. So what you're going to hear are very specific plans with goals and action steps around each of these three components, okay? And what they're going to do this year to get better at those things that they've decided and determined as a team in their building, we need to work on to be better and have better instruction and better student learning, okay? So that's the context for what you're going to hear from the principals. And Matt is going to be the first.
All right, thank you. So in the area of rigorous and relevant curriculum at VES, our goal is for 85% of students will make a year's worth of growth based on their NWA map in the areas of reading and language arts for the upcoming school year. You know, we've been sharing that map data with you for the last few years. And to get 85% of our students to make their own personal growth goal would be a nice jump, so that's the goal that we've set as a team. How are we going to do that? Implement a grade level reading intervention and enrichment block that utilizes all reading grade level staff to provide differentiated instruction for individual students based off their data. So we've been moving towards that intervention model the last couple of years, shifting away from the Title I model, the way we were using it prior. And we finally, I believe, had that fully implemented this fall between our title teachers and our reading specialists and the works up together. We're able to send six to seven teachers into a grade level on top of the classroom teachers for an hour. So we're looking at between 11, 10 and 12 teachers, 11 at most grade levels, for that full hour going into working with those students. So when you have a class, five classes of around 20, 25 kids, you can devote that hour with 12 teachers just providing enrichment and intervention. We're able to ensure that we're getting a minimum of 60 minutes of small group time a week for all students and as much as 120 minutes a week for students who are in that intervention piece weekly of small group time uninterrupted instruction, not from their core instruction time the way we have it designed now. So we're really able to hone in on what the students need to make that happen.
And the reason for that is we know that the only way that we catch up students who are behind in reading is more really good reading instruction. It's the only thing that works.
That 120 minutes for those kids who are behind is on top of a guaranteed 90 minutes of reading instruction daily that they're already getting. So 120 minutes extra per week on top of the 90 minutes a day of tier one classroom instruction to receive it. Increase the students' core knowledge of and vocabulary for the use of G-ODs, wonders and other curriculums. G-ODs is newer for us, we added it last year. It's a decodable reading curriculum that aligns with our current phonics program, foundations. So the readers are introduced at the same scope and sequence of the letter sounds and the phonics that is introduced. And instead of it being just kind of phonics readers sometimes are kind of rhyming and things like that, these are more high interest, nonfiction texts. And the feedback from the teachers about using those last year and into this year has been really great. The students are really interested in the things that are coming out of those books, so they're more engaged in the process. And having something that's decodable is, was the key because what we've gotten from the science of reading and approved curriculums from the state is moving away from leveled readers and more to decodable readers to deep reading. And so having that piece has been critical.
Tell us what decodable means. Tell us what decodable means, Matt.
So decodable meaning that the students are able to break down the word and sound it out rather than just a bunch of high frequency words. When you're getting leveled readers, the students would be like, here's your on level, below level, above level text. But in the decodable text, at least 70% of the text is able for the students to sound it out and break it down. And the last part for rigorous and relevant curriculum is selecting the new tier one reading curriculum. Right now, we have six teachers from VES working on the committee with Mr. Weaver and some teachers from the middle school as well, as they're looking at the adoption of our reading curriculum moving forward. So they're reading frequently and currently they're in the process of reviewing the materials. And so I think as we get closer to that, we'll be able to share some of those materials as well. And so that's something we look forward to. We spent so much time the last year working on that tier two intervention piece, so now it's time to take a step back and then figure out what we need to do differently in tier one. Goal number two, under teacher knowledge and skill, implement evidence-based data-driven instruction to allow teachers to utilize that instruction for student needs. Again, a big part of that's happening during that intervention block. But the first action step is at each grade level, getting our teacher teams working with and analyzing their data and collaborating with each other to group students and implement strategies during that intervention time to support student growth. How are we doing that? We now have a, developed at each grade level, a data collection tool that we're using to get all, we have so much data, to get it all in one place, so that when you're comparing a student across their map data to their cadence data, to their Haggerty screener, we can put all of that in one place. They can look and say, oh, but here's, we see a pattern of what a student needs, or this student doesn't need so much the phonics, but they need the phonemic awareness. And just getting it all in places where the student, where the teachers could make those decisions more easily. And then we use that information to form our groups. We review that data every six to eight weeks, so we can adjust those intervention groups as needed. Step two, incorporate instructional strategies related to the science of reading. This goal was in there last year as well, it's still continuation. We continue to utilize teacher observation, peer observation and common planning time to make sure that we're using those best practices. We said a lot, we've got, all of our teachers were letters trained. We have several teachers who were Horton-Gillingham trained and several teachers we trained to use the Sunde Intervention System for reading. So making sure that all that time and effort we put into that professional development is that they're using those strategies and that they're sharing the things that some of them may have learned, that others didn't, giving them that common time. So that's how we're working on the second action step. Lastly, for that part is during our monthly grade level teacher-based team meetings, TBTs, that's when we get together as teams once a month and then more frequently, they do it twice a month, once where I attend, another time without me. But engaging in discussions utilizing the DataWise framework. So DataWise was a book study we completed last year with the leadership team that really focused on when you're looking at your data, that going through a cycle of decision making and that process. We spent the year working on that as a leadership team. And now we're planning during our building leadership teams for the teacher-based teams, the teacher leaders to then go back and hold those discussions and use that process for making those decisions that we're using during that time. So that is something that we've been working on and is now fully also being implemented. So a lot of the things this year that we're doing are things we've been building up to and we're finally really getting into them. So I'm excited for hopefully to see those results soon in those maps scores and, you know, just seeing the student growth. Lastly, the student engagement goals. Last year, we spoke a lot about PBIS during student engagement goals. This year though, we're focusing more on engaging the students into active learning and active participation in the classroom. So the goal is to improve student engagement by implementing strategies to promote active student participation. The first step was utilize staff meeting and professional development time to build staff knowledge in the areas of active and visual learning. We really, clearly I said, started with a heavy emphasis on that this school year. We spent our staff PD day in August. And then just last week, that half day that we had at VES before conferences on Thursday was all spent on time focusing on providing students more opportunities to participate in their learning and making learning more visible. There's a book that we're using for that called Making Learning Visible. And so we're just taking some strategies from that. It's really about getting students, instead of just getting their thoughts out and sharing it with each other, so it's not just always just, it's just different ways of getting it written down and allowing students to express the things they're thinking. So often, we're just calling on one or two hands and then moving on. But if we can give more kids the opportunity to share what they're thinking, learn from each other, communicating, that's the goal. Implement classroom lessons at each grade level, incorporating engagement strategies for active student participation. Again, part of that time was spent just going through some extra strategies, talking about how can we get the kids more involved? So as teachers are planning lessons, making sure we're including those strategies. And then as the administrators, when we're getting out and about and doing observations and making sure that we're looking for that and making sure the students are engaged. We'll hopefully get to see some of that through instructional rounds that we're starting soon at each of the buildings. So another opportunity to get out and have more eyes looking at what's happening within the classroom and how we're engaging students. And the last one, we still wanted to keep up PBIS goal there because it's a very important part of what we do. Involve students in creating classroom expectations and the classroom culture that continues to align with the VES promise, which is respectful, responsible, safe and ready to learn. We recently were just notified that we did earn the silver level of achievement for our PBS practices at VES. We earned bronze the year prior, so this year, obviously, our next goal is to move up to gold. And one way we hope to grow that in that area is to engage our students more in the decision-making process for expectations and rules throughout the building. So the more you can include the students in that process, you can score higher in the state's rubric and then receive that gold award. Yeah, we like gold, but the main reason is to help the students get more engagement process. So those are the things we're doing. I'm looking forward to coming back in this spring and sharing the progress that we're making in all of those areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask two quick questions?
You can.
Thank you, sorry.
No.
Regarding curriculum.
Yep.
We've got a committee working on selecting a new curriculum for, for tier one core instruction, right?
Correct.
But the line before, like the G-ODs was added last year, so is this replacing it or in addition to or?
So the G-ODs right now is, was in addition to a need that we had. We had nothing decodable. And we've been working on the science of reading. So whatever happens with what we bring in as new, the G-ODs will still be relevant to some of that small group time and intervention. Hopefully, whatever we choose, it will still fit in with tier one, but until that final decision is made. But there are plenty of things that it still coincides with. And there's some of the curriculums we look at that still mirror and match the way the sounds and things are introduced with the G-ODs. But the G-ODs will be able to be used either way, whether it's in whole group instruction or still through intervention and enrichment.
So when you're measuring progress, it should still be relevant, right? That, you know, year over year or test over test progress should still make sense.
Whatever curriculum we choose is the tool towards getting to that progress, but where that really comes from is the work that teachers are doing with the kids and, and how we're delivering the standards.
And then one other thing, on the, on the last item, the bronze, silver, gold PBIS stuff, how is that measured and how do you, who determines what level you are?
So our PBS team, Mrs. Redman took that over when she came in as the assistant principal. Oh, there's something I can give to somebody else. And so she took over that committee for me. But to do that, there's a rubric from the state that is set in and you provide physical evidence. So we have to turn it like up, it's a digital binder with evidence of various different categories saying whether it's, what do we have in place for student interventions for students who are having difficulty in areas of behavior? Or what do we have in place for students who are having social, emotional difficulties? Or just different, and it's based on tiers. So like what are we doing is whole group, tier one interventions? Most of that comes from our school counselor, which he goes and does classroom lessons. Then tier two, we have our behavior specialist. So students that she's working with in small groups or counselors are meeting with in small groups means a lot of the things for tier two, so a small group. And then tier three, that's really, to get to gold, you have to be covering all the different tiers and covering them well. And so that's what you're filling out in that rubric is showing just the different things the state asks.
Okay.
We self-assess and then we post-assess at the end of each year. But they collect a lot of data from us that we have to send in to show whether it's lesson plans that we're teaching in tier one or whatever we have in place for interventions in tier two, they ask for a lot of different things.
Okay. I don't know if we said, but PBIS is positive behavior intervention supports and it's required by the state that we implement a program.
And it's not a program, like PBIS, like a lot of people think it's a program. It's really just a framework for providing support to students.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yeah.
It's required that we do this program?
Required that we have PBIS in place and that framework in place.
But not that you have to hit certain levels or anything like that, just to do.
No, that was something Mrs. Redman decided that she felt like, she came in and looked at what we were doing and she said, Matt, why aren't you applying for this? We already do enough to qualify for, at the very least, bronze. And I'm like, I don't know, I didn't really need a star. And so she's something she wanted to do in that role. And I really didn't even know they recognized our programs, honestly. And so she, the district she came from had gotten that prior. So she was excited about taking that on and seeing where we could go. And last year, after we got bronze, I said, do you have to get silver or can we go right for gold? And she was like, well, you can, but let's, so she just, they did the steps to get to silver and this year they're aiming for gold.
Well, congratulations.
That's great.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep picking at him.
You do?
Just keep picking at him.
I know. That's got a little rude.
So Mike is filling in for Wendy because she is traveling back from Idaho from her son's wedding.
Good evening, everyone, glad to be here. I'd like to get everyone up to date on the Salyway Middle School building instructional core plan. And I was actually wondering what the calculus through elements, as Dr. Heil mentioned. I was going to say categories, but I think elements is better, categories, I sound like a game show host or something, I don't want to sound like that, so. Well, take a look at the goals. And the first one, under the element rigorous and relevant curriculum, first, let me just say I'd like to thank our staff for the time and the effort they put into this. First, they had to get myself and this is how I went up to speed. We really used last year's document as a starting point. And then we had a lot of collaboration from our building leadership team and then further work by our departments when they met. We looked firsthand at common assessments that had already structured. And really, there's been numerous drafts of this document leading up to this evening. So the first goal under rigorous and relevant curriculum is that our grade level teams will implement data analysis of common assessments based on item analysis in pet areas and they will collaborate on best practices. And we have four action steps connected to this. The first three really have to do directly with our teachers. The first one, that our teachers will administer one common assessment at least once per unit. And that switch because we originally had per month, but we recognize that humans sometimes vary in time, so we felt that was a better way to do that. Also then, the second action step was to meet, to discuss the data analysis and item analysis results and to make sure we did that regularly, again, at least once per unit.
Let me just interrupt a minute, Mike.
Sure.
Why common assessments? If you have, say, five teachers teaching the same subject to the same grade level and they're all giving a different assessment, you can't compare whether students are getting certain parts of the standards. But if they're giving the same assessments, now you can look at the data across all those five classrooms and all of those students and determine where strengths and weaknesses are occurring with teaching and learning. So that's why we want to get common assessments in place.
And really, I think they have a good handle on the subjective common assessments from the curriculum that they have. We're also going to try to move through more informative assessments, do it, make those common as well, one of the department teams, so they can really be consistent on a day-to-day basis for our students. So the third part, our teachers are really going to share strengths and utilize instructional strategies that were shown to be effective based on what they looked at in their data analysis. And then the fourth part is some training will be provided by the teachers, courtesy gracious Wes here. He's planning on training all our content areas on a program called the Reading Revolution. That'll be incorporated into the content curriculum. That'll be incorporated into the content curriculum maps and the daily lesson plans. So we're certainly excited as we look at the rigor of our curriculum. Moving on to the next element, the teacher knowledge and skill, the goal is that our teachers are going to fulfill requirements for the science of reading training, and they're going to implement one of the five pillars, which are designated there, you're outlined, of anemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. And the action steps there, the first three listed all have to do with the training that's required with science of reading. Our district has made that requirement due by May. So first one is obviously just completing the training. The second is we're requiring the teachers to submit syllabus and certificates, excuse me, to verify completion. And then also, the third one, we're going to contract on Google Form, making sure that we have documentation where requirements used to fill the training. And then the last two action steps, the fourth one, a team of teachers will create a bank of comprehension strategies. Working on that as we speak. And then the fifth, teachers then will utilize that bank of comprehension strategies, review and discussing with the patient, during department meetings, which they're already having. And then we get common assessments as well as the map data, will be utilized to measure and document effectiveness. So we're really excited to be able to target, you know, what areas really need more emphasis for our students. The last piece on student engagement, the goal is by May of 2025, our teachers will explore and refine the concept of student engagement. This is really starting kind of at ground zero. We needed some guidance with this because there were a lot of different opinions in our group about what exactly student engagement was. And if I can skip out just to action step two, we are in the process of rewriting the definition of student engagement. What we had earlier, the team admitted was kind of just a glob of different terms that were glued. And we really wanted to more closely define and simplify the definition. And everyone agreed, you know what student engagement looks like, but it's kind of hard to put into words for a really concise definition. So that's work being done. And to help us with that, back to action step one, we're going to read and discuss a book. We're going to do a book study. We had two books that we looked at for it. We settled on confronting the crisis of engagement. We felt that one was a little more updated, a little more reader-friendly, and we're going to be working on that throughout the year in our department meetings. The third action step, teachers will determine student engagement strategies to be implemented. This was another area where we had a laundry list of items, but in looking at that list, it was quick, in my opinion, to notice that they weren't all strategies. A lot of them were just activities. So we tasked the team to go back and really look at which ones were strategies and which ones were more just activities. So eliminate the activities that's really zeroing on the strategies. So I think we have a better handle on that now. And then our last piece will be to implement, our implementation of all this student engagement work will be the focus of the instructional rounds when they occur in the spring at Salyway. We're hoping that that will center the benchmarks so that we can move forward on this particular element. Questions?
Mike, with the, so it looks like, goal-wise, most of this is deliverable by May of 25, right? With the action steps, is there a, like, a timeline or a set of milestones that, you know, by this certain time, the completing of the science of reading training will be done, and by this time or whatever, you know what I mean? Do you have it laid out to that detail?
I think that everything, the goal is by the end of the school year, with perhaps the last action step on student engagement being what it will extend because that's when we're just setting the benchmark in the spring, and we'll be able to move forward with that next school year and look at increasing that as student engagement.
Should there be, like, as you go through the year, though, should there be a way of measuring progress toward these action items so that you don't get upon April and then realize that you're not going to achieve it? You know what I mean?
Well, I think that, you know, that will go with our department meetings. We'll get a feel for that and know whether we're on track or not.
Gotcha. Okay.
We are projecting that we will be on track.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else?
No. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to share this critical work that we're doing. At Vermillion High School, as far as rigorous and relevant curriculum, we are in the process of aligning our student assessments to our priority standards. So two years ago, we started the in-depth process, an ongoing process, really never ends, of devising and revising our curriculum maps for all of the subjects that are taught here at Vermillion High School. And last year, we revised those maps by honing in on those priority standards. So just to give you an example, in any given subject, there's anywhere from 30 to 50 standards as designated by the State of Ohio that must be taught in any given subject. Fifty-seven standards in English one or English two, for example, is not a realistic attainable goal for any student in that class. So we have to focus on what are the most important critical skills and concepts that those students have to have as they progressively move through the curriculum. What will they need beyond high school? And that's what we try to provide them. So we established those priority standards last year. This year, we're really looking at those student assessments to make sure, number one, they're developmentally appropriate, that they're rigorous in their design, and that they are requiring students to do what those standards are asking of them, and making sure that students can't just Google the answers, that they have to do more critical thinking, and that they're aligned with those standards. As far as teacher knowledge and skill, last year, we did a book study, which we continue this year, Focus. It's all about what you teach and how you teach it, and the focus of those two things in student learning. And so this year, we're focusing on explicit instruction, as we did last year. That will just be a continual focus for us as we do our instructional rounds, both at the building level and the district level. And so the goal is that we see that happening at least 60% of the time in all of the lessons. And what explicit instruction is, is clear learning targets, direct instruction delivered in small attainable pieces, guided practice and checks for understanding in every single lesson to make sure that all of the students are learning the material. So in the instructional rounds that we've been conducting so far at the high school, we're seeing bits and pieces 70% of the time. We'd like to see all of those components 100% of the time ideally, but we're starting at 60% in the building there. We started the year out, again, revisiting the book Focus and talking about that explicit instruction, which is also tied into the science of reading training that was discussed earlier in other plans. And student engagement, we want students engaged by reading, writing, or engaging in academic peer dialogue in every lesson. We already mentioned the Writing Revolution on March 7th. Our English department has graciously agreed to train our other teachers on how to integrate some of those key practices because we know that when students write about what they're learning, the learning increases. And so any opportunity that we have for students to read, write, engage in dialogue with each other about the content is shown to result in learning, and we wanted to see that at least 40% of the time. Right now, we're at 45% of the time in the lessons that we're doing instructional rounds on. And we're really excited on this Wednesday because at VHS, that'll be our first district-wide instructional rounds day, that we're having our district's meeting, which comprises 24 people to come into all of our classrooms and observe pretty much a whole lesson and then give some observations about what was going on in that lesson. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So hopefully, you see that that diagram up there keeps us focused on the things that will improve student achievement. And so then we have to build our plans at the building level. The research says the most important changes have to occur in a classroom. You can renovate buildings, and you can build monuments to people, and you can do, you know, change bell schedules, and none of that affects student achievement. So critically, we have to focus on those three areas and make sure that we never take our eye off the ball. And that's the whole point of these building instructional core plans. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, item nine, the treasures report and/or recommendations.
Thank you. A recommend resolution to the board to approve the financial report for September 2024, and that is attachment A.
I'll move. I'll second.
All right. Looking at the general fund first here, and the revenue. Through the month of September, we have received 10.2 million in the general fund revenue, compared to 9.9 million at this time last year, and 9.8 million in fiscal year '23. As such, the district is on pace to collect its historical average revenue. Moving on to food service through September, the district has received $52,000 in food service revenue compared to $50,000 this time last year, and almost $80,000 in fiscal year '23. Fiscal year '23, we were receiving all lunches free and reduced by the federal government, so it was a little bit higher. But food service revenue should continue to collect its historical average, with the exception of fiscal year '23 there. And then moving on to all funds revenue through the month of September, we've received 10.6 million in all funds compared to 10.3 in fiscal year '24 and 10.25 in fiscal year '23. For a longer historical average look at revenue over the last eight fiscal years, so fiscal year '17 through fiscal year '24, the district averaged 10.2 million. This year, we did sell one of our buildings, 935 Decatur, for $314,000 after auction fees. If you factor that out, that one-time sale out, the district average revenue is just over $100,000 from its eight-year average. The district's total revenue really hasn't changed in almost a decade. Moving on to the expenditure side, looking at the general fund, through September, we've expended 6.77 million from the general fund compared to 7.13 in fiscal year '24 and 7.28 in fiscal year '23. The district can expect to spend slightly more this fiscal year than it did last fiscal year. And below is a breakdown of the individual general fund costs year over year. On there, we break down salaries, just how the five-year forecast looks. Salaries, insurance, retirement, purchase services, supplies, capital outlay. Salaries were a little bit higher than last year. Insurance, purchase services, supplies, capital outlay, slightly lower than we were at this time last year. Again, we're only three months into it, though. As these continue to go throughout the rest of the year, I do expect our fiscal year '25 cost to be slightly more than they were last year. Looking at food service through the month of September, we've expended $236,000.
I have a question, sorry, just a...
Sure, go ahead.
I noticed in fiscal year 2023, the salaries were higher.
So that was all just timing.
Okay.
That was us coming off of 26 pays and then moving over to 24 pays. And so to get that 26 pay, we had to pay it in '23 versus when it should have been paid in '22.
Okay.
And then we doubled up pay. So to catch everybody up, to move them from a 24 pay to a 26 pay, you have to pay out their contract.
All right. Thank you.
So that increased it there, yeah. Anything else on that chart in particular?
This is the one that stood out to me. I probably should have noticed that sooner, but...
No, no, you're fine. Yeah, these will all catch itself up. Back to food service here, though, we spent $236,000 this year compared to 172 last year and 188 in fiscal year '23. The reason, if you look at September there, that blue bar, why it's so high, we purchased a cold food serving table. We produced a hydroponic plant system to grow vegetables and a new refrigerator, and that drove up our spending this month compared to our historical averages. Looking at all funds through the month of September, we expended 7.4 million from all funds compared to 8.2 at this time last year and 8 million in fiscal year '23. Looking at cash, looking at the general fund through the month of September, we have a total of 19.7 million in cash compared to 20.1 million at this time last year and 21.4 in fiscal year '23. Food service, we have a total of 216, 217,000 in cash compared to 293,000 at this time last year and 270,000 in fiscal year '23. And then when you look at all of our cash through the month of September, we have a total of 22.8 million in cash compared to 23.8 in fiscal year '24 and 26.6 in fiscal year '23. The next page over, I do break down that 22.8 million in cash by all of our funds there, so you can see where everything is. And then on the investment side, through the month of September, we've earned a total of $209,056.79 in interest compared to $142,921.77 at this time last year, which is a difference of $66,000 or 46.3% more in interest this year than last year.
Any other questions? Call roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0. B, recommend a resolution to the board to approve the following donations. $1,000 from Trinter Farms to VHS FFA for the FFA convention. $100 from Julia and Samuel Woodruff to VHS FFA. $250 from Hermes Parker Concrete to VHS FFA. $250 from Gallagher Plumbing to FFA. And $600 from Mark and Amy Haynes to VES for Back to Wild.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Just say that it's outstanding to get so many great donations, especially to help get the FFA program off the ground, so that's really awesome.
Yeah.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0. And C, recommend a resolution to the board to approve the E-Rate Consulting Agreement with Vermillion Local Schools and Educational Funding Group for consulting services relative to the FCC E-Rate Program.
I'll move.
Second.
Can you tell us what the E-Rate Program is, real quick?
Yeah, this is just us partnering with a third party to help facilitate. This is all like a federal program, and so there's a lot of paperwork and checks and balances and contracts that need to be done, and so this group will take care of that portion of our work for us.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Item 10 is the consent agenda. The superintendent and treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the board in adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one vote unless a member of the board, the treasurer, or the superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. Item A, approve the minutes of the regular meeting for September 9, 2024. Item B, approve the employment action. Jules Bartlamay, VES, educational aide. Item C, resignation. Jacob Christopher, bus driver in training. Jules Bartlamay, SMS food service assistant. Item D, approve the one-year, 2024-2025 additional duty contracts for the following certified staff as listed on the agenda. Item E, approve the one-year, 2024-25 supplemental non-teaching contracts for the following people listed on the agenda. Item F, approve the one-year, 2024-25 substitute contract at $15 an hour to the following. Zachary Alter, custodian. Hope Schuster Calhoun, custodian. Item G, approve Claire Vilagie to take six students to Indianapolis for the National FFA Convention. Are there any items to be removed? Okay, can I get a motion to accept?
I'll second.
And call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Item 11 is the date and location of upcoming board meetings. Meetings will be held in the Vermillion High School Commons, 1250 Sanford Street in Vermillion at 6:00 PM, unless otherwise noted. We have a regular meeting on Monday, November 11, 2024, a regular meeting on December 9, 2024, and an organizational and regular meeting on January 13 of 2025. Item 12 is public participation. The public participation section of the Board of Education Agenda specifically designed designed for the public to address the board with their compliments, concerns, ideas, or questions. The board welcomes your comments. If you wish to address the board regarding an issue, the board will remind you of two things. First, your comments should be factual and respectful of others. Second, before coming to the board with an issue, you should have first addressed it with an appropriate teacher, staff member, or administrator. This meeting of the Board of Education in public is for the purpose of conducting school district business. The time allotted is 30 minutes total. Individuals should keep their minutes or their time to three minutes or less. The board president reserves the right to limit a speaker's time. Did we have a sign, I don't think, did anyone sign up to speak? If you want to speak, you can speak. It's okay. Just if you would, step to the microphone and tell us who you are.
My name is Don Arlo. I'm a student in Vermillion. There were some issues with an athlete code of conduct that seems to be irrelevant compared to the other things that the principals were talking about, but for a lot of students, they want to participate in that, the athletics. I don't know if you guys would address the way it's written. I've read it several times. It got to my attention. Didn't impact my child at all, but it impacted people that I know. If my child goes to a party or a graduation party, and there's a 20-year-old drinking that he has no control over, I think it's the right thing for him to choose not to drink and not be penalized and kicked out of sports or penalized and out of sports because he was around people that were drinking, and he chose not to. I just think that's a poorly written policy, or maybe not poorly written, poorly enforced. I don't know which way you'd want to look at it, but if the board or administration could look at that policy and possibly change it, you know? I feel like I can't even take him to a graduation party this year because of the way this was enforced. If you have a 19, 20-year-old, they have no, they can have a drink in a solo cup. Because my kid was there, somebody else reports it to the school, that I was at that party or graduation, I'm not talking about after-hours parties at the, I'm talking about going to the VFW, and there's a 19-year-old with a drink, and my kid can't play sports next year because he was at a graduation party? That.
So that's where the discretion comes in. This wasn't, what you're describing is not what happened.
It's not what happened, but the way it's written.
Right, again, that's where the.
That's why I was saying, moving forward.
Yeah, that's where the discretion comes in. The point of the clause that you're referring to is to discourage kids from going to these after-hours parties that are hosted by kids who are underage, which is what happened in the event that you're talking about. And so it's to discourage them from even being there. That's why the clause is there. And then there's discretion within that to determine, you know, if, what happened. And a lot of what we learned about what happened at that event came from the Sheriff's Department. And so we had to use that information because we weren't there, but we do trust the Sheriff's Department implicitly. We work with them very closely on lots of things. So, but that's where the discretion would come in. If you're with your child, you're, as the adult, the parent, and you're at the VFW or you're at a party with them, you know, that's going to be taken into consideration if somebody even reports that. We don't, I'll be honest with you, we don't get reports about that kind of stuff. What we get reports about is a bunch of teenagers who are underage drinking at somebody's house, and somebody calls the cops. We wouldn't have known about this if some, if, you know, the Sheriff's Department didn't show up. So, but the adventure years, I've been doing this for 20 years now. No one's ever reported their kid drinking with their parent at the VFW or at a graduation party. I'm not saying it can't happen.
Well, that's what I'm saying, to prevent it from happening.
Yeah, I'm saying that's where we would.
That clause can be taken.
That's where our discretion would come in. We have, we are going to discuss it. I said we need to have a conversation about this clause because we were debating on.
The clause says openly. Was that, I mean, was at this party, was it openly?
I'm not sure. I would say, this party aside.
Yeah.
I do appreciate, so I think we appreciate your comments and your opinion on it, and I do think it's going to generate some discussion, so.
It is.
I think it is, it's, you know, well put, and I think it's going to generate some discussion down the road as to how we might more clearly address these issues and just make sure that there's nothing left open in the gray, right?
That's what I would refer to, gray.
Yeah, but there's always gray, unfortunately. I mean, you know, we got hundreds of policies, and there's gray in every one of them.
Well, I think it's also important to have a little bit of discretion in there, right? Where you can make a discretionary determination.
What you're talking about is that your discretion, so you have students that were there who are totally hammered, and you have students that weren't drinking, and they all get the same thing.
They didn't all get the same thing, sir. Students who were not drinking got one, they got 10% penalty. The students that were drinking got 20% of their season. And that's where, but that's where the discretion came in. Yeah, well, but there's also discretion involved in every one of those.
That's where the discretion came in.
Right.
So, thank you.
We will be looking.
They will be discussing, we've already started discussing it when this came up, when we saw the clause, and we discussed how it should be enforced and tried to be as fair as we could be, but also hold people accountable. So that is going to, that conversation is going to continue about what that looks like going forward. Thank you. Thank you.
Who brings that up, or who discusses that, the board?
Well, the administration would make the recommendation to the board. That's in the Athlete Code of Conduct, which is adopted by the board annually. So it becomes a board policy once it's adopted by the board. But the administration looks at those things and makes a recommendation to the board.
Yeah, I just think it is, an athlete, being a leader, is a leader going to a party and not drinking and setting an example of not drinking.
Well, I think that's.
Not even go to the party, but out.
But I think that's why it's going to generate some discussion.
Okay, right.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're good? All right, item 13 is a motion for adjournment.
I move.
I'll second.
All right. Call and roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Motion approved, 4-0.